Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks as always go out to East Hampton Media and the great work that they do. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conferencing. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. This meeting will now be called to order. Barbara, roll call.
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Erica Flood?
Here.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zerrit?
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. Now we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic.
Republic.
Which stands.
Nation.
One nation, indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes to approve, so we'll go right into public speak. Just to let everyone know who is here for public speak, that if you have something you would like to speak about that is not on the public hearing, now would be the time to do so. We will not be able to respond in any way to anything that you may bring up. We will be able to respond during public speak, or public hearings, if that is something that you want to speak to that about. To raise your hand, please select the participant option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise the Hand at the bottom of that window. If you're dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. You can also mute and unmute your line by pressing *6. Before commenting, please state your name and your street or your town, if it is not East Hampton. You will have three minutes to make your comments. If time runs out, you may finish the sentence that you were speaking. Tonight, we do have a public hearing at 6:15, so public speak will be paused at 6:15 until the completion of that hearing. Once the public hearing has completed, we will resume public speak if necessary. So if there is anyone who would like to speak about something that is not on the public hearing, go ahead and raise your hand. Bill Lynch?
First time, long time. It's actually in regards to the school. With the cost of supplies going up, kind of just wanted to bring awareness to it, see if there's been any discussion. I'm not sure if the contract actually has us with taking on some of that burden of the additional costs with the supplies of the school, or if it was locked in with the contract. I think it's good to know, and I don't know if it's been reported in the last month or so with some of the Merrill reports, and I know you guys can't answer this question right now, but just curious if the contract shows, you know, that they'll own a 10% increase, and then the rest of it's on the burden of the taxpayers, if there's been discussion of how that's slated to be paid for, or any of those details. That's all, just in relation with the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we see any other hands raised? Dan?
I do not.
Since we have some time before the public hearing, we can go into communicate, are there any communications from elected officials, boards, or committees? Counselor Zerret?
Thank you, President Coniff. Hello, everyone. Good to see you all virtually, as we are now, what, seven months into virtual meetings. Just wanted to briefly speak to the rising cases of COVID, certainly locally and across our country, and as we head into the holiday season with Thanksgiving coming up next week, and the winter holidays coming about a month away. I know that people want to see friends and family, that's a lot of what these holidays are about, but I urge everyone to think very seriously about how they may or may not practice getting together with friends and loved ones this year. Fortunately, we live in a time where we have software and technology that allows us, like we are right now, to get together and see people, and I urge people who are considering gathering with large groups of people that may live out of state, or you're not fully aware of their contact situation, to consider not meeting in person this year. COVID is on the rise, and it's real. In our country, right now, North Dakota and South Dakota have the first and the third highest mortality rate in the world from COVID-19. This is serious, and it's likely to get worse after Thanksgiving. Small private gatherings are probably the leading cause of the spread of COVID-19, and until we have a realistic vaccine, there look to be right now, two promising ones on the way, we all have to do what we can to stop the spread. And talking locally, if we want to save our businesses and get back to normal sooner, we all need to start thinking about what we can do personally. One of those, as we know, wear a mask. It's simple, takes two seconds. They come in many colors and patterns. So I wish everyone here watching, and certainly my colleagues on the council and the city, great holidays, just be smart and be safe. And just on another quick note, on the same account, I don't remember if I mentioned this last time, I was trying to determine if there was a way that we might be able to do some sort of in-person Hanukkah celebration this year. I think this would be our fourth or fifth year doing Hanukkah in the city, and I just, for the reasons I just enumerated, I don't think that that's responsible or possible. And so I will be putting together a virtual event, I'll keep you all posted, and happy holiday season, everyone.
Thank you. Any other councilors who would like to speak? JP, did I see your hand there? Go ahead, Counselor Kozinski.
I want to thank Counselor Zerret for bringing the subject up, and just wanted to say, it is truly in your hands how you protect the rest of the city. I can't stress that enough. We see the numbers going up locally, across the state, and across the country. Whether we are or not, we are able to get back to work is not dependent about whether we can rush into doing something. It's about whether this virus gets under control. Only when it's under control, and we test, can we really understand that people are safe. And the vaccine's coming, that's wonderful, but we have our own vaccine. Thank you, Counselor Zerret, for putting the mask on, keeping the social distancing. I like to think of it as physical distancing, because we're still social and we are getting together. As far as the holidays, I can't encourage everyone enough to get together in a way that doesn't create more problems for yourselves and your fellow citizens, whatever that method be. We wish you the happiest of holidays.
Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. Anyone else? Counselor Flood?
I guess I'm just going to elaborate on that and give folks some resources. My family's been using the HCC Stop the Spread testing site. That has been extended through January, and I just want to let everybody know that that's six days a week free testing. It is now 24-hour turnaround on results. Mondays from 7:00 to 11:00 a.m., Tuesdays 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., Wednesdays 7:00 to 11:00 a.m., Thursdays 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., Fridays 7:00 to 11:00 a.m., and Saturdays 7:00 to 11:00 a.m. Bring a book, you might have to wait, but it's well worth the wait. It's free, and it really doesn't get any easier than that. They'll test everybody in your car for free, and you'll have results most likely within 24 hours.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay? Thank you. Next, we move to correspondence announcements. President, Vice President, Communications, Counselor Rist?
Just want to do a shout-out to my colleague, Counselor Flood. Recently, I had hoped to give Carol at Manchester's Hardware last-minute retirement announcement from the city council. I asked Barbara if we could do something, and it was ridiculous ask, because she was still counting votes. And Erica came up with, at the last minute, a way to have everybody sign a nice card, and she bought a flower. I am thrilled with that, Erica, and it really made her day. We actually got in the paper, I didn't expect that. The photographer was there anyway. So just thank you, Erica, and just congratulations to Carol at Manchester's. Hope her retirement is a happy one. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. I just want to send a thank you to the East Hampton Police Department. I did a ride-along last week with Officer Siki, and it was enlightening, and I also talked to some of the officers in the Public Safety Complex, including Officer Fish, who is the court liaison, and some of the detectives, and there is a lot of stuff going on in the city, and they're on top of it. So I want to just thank them, thank them for their hospitality, and thank them for the ride-along. It was very interesting. So thank you, Officer Siki, and Chief Alberti for allowing me to do that. All right. Mayor LaChapelle, do you have anything that you would like to speak to?
No.
Okay. All right. Where do we sit on time? We still have time. Okay. Do you want, Counselor Rist, do you want to not, we can go with some of the other committees first, since yours is a little more involved. So if you want, I can have Public Safety an appointment, do their readout before we get to a public hearing.
I can probably do it in five minutes, ma'am.
Okay.
We met, we will be meeting this Monday, the 23rd, as it is Thanksgiving week. We moved it to Monday at 5:00 p.m. to discuss the new items on the agenda, which I will read now to move to committee. Just give me a second to get to them. There are three items, all based on the park grant, which we recently received. I want to say, first off, the first item is a $374,000 capital stabilization request, and I just want to let everybody know, that's required by the park grant. We have to spend the money and do the work before they give us the grant. It's in the law, and unfortunately, we have to, it's a reimbursement. So if anybody's wondering, that is the exact amount we were recently awarded. It's because the law says we have to do it. So I will do a first reading of all of these appropriations. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, $374,000 to be appropriated from capital stabilization, $374,000 to be appropriated to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park development, $374,000, for the purpose of showing availability of funds to obtain state park grant funding for the development of Mount Tom Trailhead Park in the amount of $374,000. The next first reading is for an appropriation from the Community Preservation Act. The amount is $176,000, which will be appropriated to, I'm sorry, appropriated from CPA Reserve for Open Space, $75,000, and CPA Undesignated Fund, $101,000, for a total of $176,000, and that amount is appropriated to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park construction, $176,000, for the following purpose, for funding of the final design, construction drawings, and construction of the new accessible trail, trailhead parking area, hiking loop trail, and gathering area at Mount Tom North Trailhead Park. And the final appropriation is also a CPA request. I'm trying to get to it, darn it. The amount requested is $9,850 to be appropriated from CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $9,850 to be appropriated to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park Historic Survey Account, $9,850 for the following purpose, to provide funds for a consultant to conduct an intensive historic survey of Mount Tom North Trailhead Park site. I move that the last three aforementioned items be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
Motion and a second for three supplemental appropriations for the Mount Tom Trailhead Park. Any further discussion? All right, Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
I further move that the last three aforementioned items be set for public hearing on December 2nd at 6:15 p.m. The reason for this is because there is a deadline to receive the grant, and it's the end of December, and I don't want to take a chance. So I do move that they be moved to, I'm sorry, set for public hearing December 2nd.
Second.
Motion is second to set a public hearing on the appropriations for the Mount Tom Trailhead on December 2nd at 6:15. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye. Motion passes.
Last announcement is on Monday, the 30th. We will be discussing the One Ferry Street 121A alternative tax payment. That's the only item in the Finance Committee's agenda, and I know we might all have questions, so all of the people from One Ferry Street will attend. I encourage the councilors to attend. That concludes.
Counselor Rist, is that also at 5 o'clock, the November 30?
I have to, I have to wait and make sure that they can all attend at 5. I will send out that email.
Okay.
And you'll all be getting an agenda, but it'll either be 5 or 6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. All right, it is now 6:15, and we will, I'll take a motion to open the public hearings.
Second.
Motion is second to open the public hearings. All those, Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Before we begin, there's a few of you who have your cameras on. I'm going to turn those off, so don't, you haven't been logged out. We're just turning, it's really hard to manage this when you have a lot of people moving around, so if you're not a city councilor, you may see your video go off, but you are still in the meeting. So just wanted to let you guys know that. All right, let me just do this, and you can certainly turn it on if you want to speak during the hearing. Okay.
Madam President, when I do my report, would you do the admitting?
I will.
The first items on the agenda are three ordinances regarding increases to salaries and stipends for elected officials. I will read from the Finance Committee report. Members of East Hampton City Council, the Finance Committee has concluded its review of salaries and stipends for elected officials, boards, and committees, and respectfully submits the following for your review. The committee decided not to address appointed boards and committees, although some of our most important regulatory boards are very deserving of increased stipends, such as the Board of Public Works, Planning Board, and Board of Assessors. The committee felt that due to the budget uncertainty and the fact that the increases for these stipends are not charter-restricted, as with elected officials, they can be dealt with at any time. The committee felt that due to the constraint, that setting any new salary stipend increases for elected officials must be approved before December 31st this year, they should be addressed now if any increases were to be recommended. It is very important to note that these suggested increases are for the positions and not for any current elected official, as they do not go into effect until January 1st, 2022, after the next city election. Current elected officials must win reelection to be eligible for these increases. The Finance Committee recommends the following for the position of mayor, increase from $75,000 to $90,000. This was last increased in 2016. If not adopted this year, it will be 10 years since the last increase, six years from now before salary increase could be next added, 2026, with a four-year term now implemented with the next election. The charter prevents midterm increases for any elected official. This $15,000 increase would be less than 2% increase over 10 years from the current salary. That is, if the city were able to give the mayor an increase every year for 10 years, like a COLA, we would have less than a 2% increase, but that is not allowed. It does not calculate such an increase. It does calculate if it was compounded as well, less than 2%. East Hampton's mayoral salary is less than most mayoral salaries for cities and towns in the state that do not have a city manager as well. As CEO of an almost $50 million business, which our city is in essence, the current salary for this position is rightfully inadequate, and may not attract anyone that might give up a higher salary to become mayor. Other cities may have higher budgets and more populations, but the responsibilities of the position are the same. The school committee, the committee felt that the current stipend of $1,400 per year for the committee that supervises our largest department and is far less than the council stipend was not fair and does not reflect the responsibility they have. The Finance Committee recommends an increase to $2,000 per year for each school committee member, or a $600 per year increase. City council, the committee is not recommending any increase to the current $4,000 per year stipend for any city councilors. However, we are recommending a $500 per year added stipend for that councilor elected as president. We feel that the president of the council has a major responsibility to run the council, maintaining professionalism and decorum. The hours spent by the president far exceeds those of any other councilor. Finally, the budget impact. The total net budget impact is $19,100 if all of these recommendations are adopted. This increase would impact the budget over two fiscal years, as only half of the increase, $9,550, would be needed in fiscal year '22, given the new stipends would not be in place until January 1st, 2022, and the other half added in fiscal year 2023. That concludes the Finance Committee report. I have a couple of personal notes. These are my own opinions. Any argument that this is a non-affordable budget impact is not credible to me. In June, the council approved an estimated three-year, $400,000 increase for one employee group, the firefighters, which I argued at the time was fiscally irresponsible, given budget uncertainty and its immediate impact this fiscal year. Although I certainly felt that the firefighters deserved the increase, I wanted to wait a year to get more budget certainly and prevent possible layoffs. The council disagreed then. Now we are in better shape revenue-wise than I thought back in June, and this increase does not impact the budget until fiscal year '22, and not fully until fiscal year '23, and is minuscule. So saying this is not affordable is hard to swallow, given the council's June decision and the fact that we will have other employee groups coming before us in this year and the next for salary increases. Also, in my history on the council, opposition in the community for mayoral increase always centered on whether people liked the current mayor. This is still the case. In fact, by raising the salary, we are increasing the likelihood that more persons with credible skill sets will run against our current mayor if she should decide to run for reelection. All of our mayors, like them or not, should have, have had major responsibilities to manage the city, and we should compensate the position accordingly. That concludes my personal opinions, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Do any councilors have any comments around this particular item? Counselor Zerret, and then Counselor Peak?
I have a quick question for probably Counselor Rist, and then just a couple of comments as well. If we were to approve, if these salaries are approved, if in 2022, there's an ongoing or new economic downturn, are they, did they automatically go into effect, or is there any action that can be taken at that time to freeze the increase?
I don't think there's anything charter-wise we could do. I would, I would say that if $9,000 increase in FY '22 is that debilitating to our budget, we have a hell of a lot more problems than that. So I don't think we can do anything, but I would mention that I remember that Mayor Tadger decided not to take the increase, so the mayor could make that decision, she would be the one, if she's reelected, that is, she would be the one to decide the budgets, so that's a possibility. But it is only $9,000 the first year, so I hope that that's not the case.
No, and then just as a comment, I mean, I agree that the position of mayor in our city is currently underpaid, and that doesn't, that's not a comment on the person who is the mayor, that's a comment on the position itself. It's clearly a very time-intensive job, and I believe that the previous mayors were not compensated appropriately. It's a, I'll just echo what you said, Counselor Rist, that these do not go into effect till 2022, and that we have to look forward, this is forward-looking, and I appreciate you also highlighting when we would be able to address this again if we do not address it now. And then really quickly, while I still have the floor, so just also to clarify, the mayors of Holyoke and North Hampton, I believe their salaries are $85,000 a year and $92,000 a year respectfully, and if I'm understanding you correctly, the reason that we're offering a higher salary to our mayors, because they do not have all the support staff that those offices do. Is that correct?
Well, that's one of the reasons. I feel that those salaries are underpaid. Personally, that's my opinion, but I don't think we should look at North Hampton and Holyoke as an example of what we should do. I do want to say that the responsibilities are the reason, and frankly, we want to attract good people, competent, skilled people to run for mayor. And I always heard that "I can't afford it" was a comment when someone said, if they were asked to run for mayor, and these are people with management skills, say. So I don't know about Holyoke and North Hampton, they're underpaid. They have the same kind of responsibilities in a major city, so I would point out that Amherst pays like $140,000 a year, smaller city than North Hampton, and that sounds appropriate given the size of their city. It's a matter of opinion, I guess, a matter of preference in each city.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, I have a letter from a constituent. Should I wait till you go around to read that into the record?
I would argue that those letters were sent to the whole community. There's a lot of letters out there, we would be here a long time, and since everybody got these letters, I, I don't know, Madam President, I would, I would ask that they, that they just be established in the record, since they were sent to emails.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we got a lot of them, and we can certainly, if, if we need to, we can certainly add them to the minutes as addendums. I think we could do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. Just as a matter of process, are we going to be debating and then voting on each of these separately?
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering, because, you know, when Counselor Rist introduced them, he sort of introduced them as, you know, overall, which I think is sensible, I'm just wondering, are we now then debating the mayoral salary?
We, we can, they are, they are going to be separate motions, and we can approve one and not approve the others. We, you can make comments right now on any of the three of them.
Okay, yeah, sure. Thank you. Yeah, I think that one thing that I would just like to say, you know, I saw a bit from the Gazette where they pointed out the proposed salary that we are proposing and compared it to the salaries of North Hampton and Holyoke as comparable communities. And I had maybe two sort of procedural issues with looking at it that way, since I think it's likely to come up. since I think it's likely to come up in our debate. I just wanted to bring these up. The first one is, for all we know, those communities are also looking at raising their salaries, you know, these are things that happen just periodically. But I think the bigger thing is, I don't actually feel like the duties and the workload of being a mayor scales in a linear fashion based on how many people you have. Certainly, a bigger city has more staff, but I think in some ways, in some ways, you could probably make the argument that smaller cities, you might have mayors that actually have to do more, they have less specialists under them, or they have, you know, smaller departments that need more support directly. In any case, you're, you're having to, if you're going to the state, for example, for resources, if you're going out to try and attract businesses into your community or whatever, you're talking about a community that is smaller, less well-known, that you're going to have to actually fight in some ways harder for. So I just think that the idea that, that the mayor should receive like X dollars per constituent is just a silly way of looking at this. That's not how we look at our, our fire chief, that's not how we look at our police chief or our superintendents, you know, these people are paid for the skills that they bring and the work that they do. And that's, that's, I think, the way that we should be looking at this, you know. And for what it's worth, like, if we approve this raise, my understanding is that the mayor would still not even be, what, like, the fifth best-paid employee in the city? You know, and so like, I just think that there's, there's just important things to consider here in terms of the context. You know, I also think that it's important to realize that for you to do this job right means working a lot of hours, right? So for me, you know, I look at seventy-five or ninety-thousand dollars, and as a thirty-two-year-old state government worker, both of those sound pretty nice. But if I had to work the number of hours that the mayor worked, those suddenly become a little bit less attractive, you know? That's just, I think that that's just an important thing to look at this too, and we're looking at all of these. So those are just two points I just generally wanted to make as we go into debate this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Peak. Any other councillors? Councillor Rothschild.
Hello, thank you councillor Coniff. I just want to say that I believe in paying people fair wages, and that includes our city officials. I value the work of civil servants, and I think they should be paid a reasonable wage, and they make far less than they would in the private sector. They're choosing to work in the public sector from a point of passion, a point of commitment to community, so I just want to put that out there. I also think, you know, there was, one of the letters we received said that the UMass executives or leadership was taking voluntary pay cuts. We're talking about people making several, you know, more than a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. These are very high-paid people that there's a bit, I've worked in higher ed a long time. The higher-up administration makes a lot more than everybody else there. This isn't the case in our city, as councillor Peak mentioned. Our mayor, as the top executive, is not even in the top five of pay. Okay, so we've got a police chief that makes around a hundred and eleven, fire chief eighty-seven, finance director eighty-five, the city planner makes seventy-seven, eighty-two, personnel director, so this is, this is our top executive. I, I think this is a very reasonable pay increase, and as councillor Rist impressed upon us, this is for twenty-twenty-two, because another one of our letters was that it's tone deaf in the middle of pandemic. I hope we're not in the middle of a pandemic, January twenty-two, but I think if anything, the pandemic has showed us how important our city leaders are. Our city leaders have had to rise to this occasion. They are working around the clock to keep us safe, our public health people, our police, our fire, and our mayor. So if anything, a public emergency like this shows us how important it is to have competent leaders at the top, and we need to keep attracting people that want to leave a higher-paid job and commit to our city. So I just, I fully support all of these increases, including, of course, the school committee, who have already probably made, you know, they are definitely doing volunteer work, those late night, if anyone's been attending the school committee meetings, they're going late into the night, hours and hours, also because of the pandemic. So this is just such a minimal increase. If anything, it's just saying, like, we value the work you're doing. It's not gonna buy much more than that, but that's my, peace out.
Thank you councillor Rothschild. Anyone else from the council? Councillor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. A few points. I do agree the, the mayor's position should pay a little more than seventy-five thousand. I don't know if ninety thousand, is that the number? I was doing the math, doing the same increase of the people who receive social security receiving every year, and I think if we do exactly the same math, we're gonna end with around eighty-two thousand dollars increase instead of ninety thousand. And I think that number should be around that, two eighty, two eighty, eighty, three eighty-four thousand dollars. So that, I think that would be more fair. About the comment about the position in Amherst, I don't think that will be a really good sample to compare pairs with pairs, because in Amherst, that position is not political. It's someone that they hired to run the town. So I think it's unfair to choose that one as a one. I want to add, the average income in East Hampton is sixty-one thousand dollars. That's what people who live in East Hampton get every year. So again, I, I agree that I think seventy-five is a little low, but we have to realize that this city and this community, the income per household is less than what the mayor is getting now. I think we consider the ninety thousand, I think we should go less than that, and when someone make a motion, I probably am gonna make a motion to reduce that number.
Thank you councillor Gomez. Councillor Rothschild.
My mouse is sticking. I just want to add that when I was researching, trying to see like what people are paid comparatively, on a side note, I really wish our city was more transparent about salaries. When you go to Northampton, it's really easy to see what everyone in that city makes, and we should have that here in East Hampton. So that's a side note. That was really frustrating when trying to research this, and that should be public and open and much more easy to access. Another thing in regards to councillor Gomez's thought of the, thought of the actual increase, I also was wondering, is eighty-five more appropriate? But the reason why I still edge towards ninety is because this isn't even gonna take effect for another two years, and then it's gonna be stuck at that point for several years, so. Good. I, that's why I think ninety is appropriate.
Thank you.
Councillor Flood.
I also, in speaking with councillor Rist, just thought of what I would really love to see is some mechanism to, so that we don't keep revisiting this argument and we make sure that this position grows with the city as we grow. I would, I would be in favor of creating a mechanism that creates an increase that is either tied to the social security rate of increase or in some other communities that I was reading about where that increase would take place, for instance, in every even-numbered year. But I think that at the moment, just creating this increase, I do believe that it's gonna create opportunity for us moving forward as, as a recruitment tool. But I also think we are shooting ourselves in the foot in a way, because we're gonna have to keep having this conversation down the road if there's no mechanism to, to continue to do whatever it is, a cost of living increase for future, future years. I also just want to throw out there, like, I know that I've been hearing Holyoke and Northampton a lot, but I do also think we have to think about more so the needs of each individual community, which I've also heard. And a couple of other surrounding communities that I also looked to, for instance, was Greenfield with a population of about seventeen thousand, whose mayor is making around seventy thousand dollars, and then North Adams with a population of just under thirteen thousand, whose mayor is making in the mid-eighties. Again, I don't think you can just look at this as a blanket, what does our mayor, you know, do we think they deserve this or not? What is the work that they're doing? What are the challenges of our community? And one document that came out recently was the draft of the housing production plan, and I think it's very important, it's a very important document in this discussion, because one of the things that it pointed to is that many people who live in East Hampton need to leave East Hampton to work. We are a commuting community. So we really need a mayor that has the talent and the experience to bring in new businesses and new industries and continue to grow job opportunities. And that really does take a high level of management, and people with that amount of experience are not gonna want to just volunteer for the love of the city. There's gonna be some love in there, but there's also going to be a maintenance of, of their lifestyle. So although I feel this discussion is happening in a very difficult time, this will hit the budget later, and I do think we need to take a long view on this and consider, how are we going to bring people to the table that have the talent and the experience that we need to grow East Hampton for everyone? We've been growing economically, but it's not been lifting up every boat. So we really do need to attract somebody who can see that larger picture and help bring jobs back to East Hampton. That's what's lacking here.
Thank you councillor Flood. Councillor Peak.
Yeah, just responding to a couple of things that folks said. I, I've sort of wondered whether it might at some point be a good idea to look at the way that we do this in our charter and see if there couldn't be some way we could set things up in a way that could afford for people to receive more gradual or stepwise pay increases like those that some of our other employees get, rather than, I, I feel like, I, I don't think we're unique here. I think this is in a lot of elected positions, a lot of positions that are like this, where it feels like it goes a long time and suddenly it feels really low, and then you have to bring it up and you know that it's gonna be, you know, a conversation, and you know it's gonna be a while before you can do it again, so you need to think about it with that in mind. And I, I don't necessarily know that that's the greatest way for us to be like determining compensation for these elected officials. So I think there's maybe, I, I don't know exactly what that would be, but I, I do think, you know, sort of to what Erica said, you know, it's in our charter, I don't think it's something that we could do right now, but I see, you know, what's going on. I see what you're saying there, I think. I do think that when we voted as a city to increase the term of the mayor to four years, it did sort of really highlight the situation, you know, because I think that if you had, if we were still talking about a two-year mayor, I'd be a lot more receptive to maybe some of the arguments that, hey, things are really bad right now, can we wait a little bit and see where this is? But, you know, the reality is, when you're talking about an election next year and then a four-year term after that, so suddenly you're talking twenty-twenty-six before this actually would go into effect, it does feel like we, we need to kind of do something now if we want that position to remain, you know, competitive to the sort of talent that we're going to want to attract, because, you know, Mayor LaChapelle is not going to probably want to work this job for the rest of her life. The other thing I would just say is, you know, I, I sort of, I, I hear what councillor Gomez and councillor Flood were saying, comparing it to social security, but sort of my understanding is that social security is pretty terrible about raising their compensation to match, you know, inflation and the rising price, cost of living. That's some, sort of, some of the reason that we're in, some of our seniors are in such a terrible position to begin with. So I'm, I, I think that, well, you could talk about different ways that you could index this to talk about what's appropriate. I'm not sure if, if that particular raise, which is sort of known for not really being fair or keeping up with the cost of living, is really the one that I would recommend we go with. And I, I think that councillor Rist's, you know, idea of sort of, you know, calculating this as roughly a two percent increase is, you know, I, I, I feel like a two percent increase over ten years is, it to me feels reasonable.
Thank you councillor Peak. Councillor Rist and then councillor Derby.
I just want to say, just in answer to councillor Gomez as well, the two percent increase over ten years is actually less. I calculated fifteen-hundred dollars times ten, which is two percent times ten is fifteen thousand. But if this was a COLA increase automatic for ten years, it would be a lot less than two percent, because you compound each year the calculation. So it's more in keeping with what might be social security. But I agree with councillor Peak, that's a bad example, because we do not treat our retired people right. I don't think it's a good example of how we should treat our mayor's position, but it's okay, I, I respect councillor Gomez's position, I just don't agree. I think the fifteen thousand dollars over ten years is reasonable. Thank you.
Councillor Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, a few of us have been through this multiple times, discussing mayoral increases, and, you know, I think it is really important to recognize, we have gotten some pretty good candidates since, when I, my first time doing this was with Mike Tausnick as mayor, and, you know, we've been pretty lucky, and it's important to, to have an incentive to get people that are going to be really good at the job. So, you know, I'm not gonna rehash what everybody said. And I also think the second point that I wanted to make was, like, a mayor's salary should be in line with the other leaders in the city. You know, I mean, if the police chief is making over a hundred thousand, I imagine superintendent is making over a hundred thousand, you know, the, there's no reason why the person who is their supervisor should be making less, honestly. And so I think that's an important point to make, and that's where I'll end.
Thank you councillor Derby. Councillor Flood.
I just want to say, I was thinking about it from that level that councillor Derby just mentioned, and the one problem that I had in this kind of like, the mayor being the CEO and should be at or above the level of every other department head is that, what I'm trying to reconcile in my mind is that the mayor has to be like an incredible generalist. I mean, you have to manage so many different things, whereas our folks, our engineers, our firefighters, our police, they spend their entire life gathering the skills to hold that position. It does take a lifetime to gather the managerial skills too, but I just, I want to raise a little caution flag on just the conversation going that the mayor should be the highest-paid person in, in the city. I, I don't agree with that, and I, I think that could be dissected a little more, but I do agree that this is currently an underpaid position, and that needs to be rectified. But I would just caution, you know, CEOs are notorious for being the highest-paid, but they would not exist without the rest of their staff, they would have no job. So I, I've really been wrestling with that idea in my mind, and I looked at all of this, all of the department head salaries, and I do think there's a large gap, but I don't necessarily believe that the mayor should be the highest-paid in the city for various reasons.
And just to be clear, that's not what I was suggesting.
Do you want, do you have another comment councillor Derby? You'd like to clarify?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that I was not suggesting that we raised the mayor's salary above the other department heads. I was saying that there should be some parity there.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments around the other, the, the school committee or the city council president? Is there any comments there? Councillor Kuzinski.
Before we move on to another subject, I would like to be able to speak to the mayor's salary for a moment. I will not repeat all the comments we've heard. I appreciate them. We do have a responsibility to run a city. We do have to look to other cities, but we certainly have to examine how we approach that increase during the pandemic and how we approach that increase, given our current situation and struggle that's faced by those who are not able to be on something other than a fixed income. So all of that going together, we have to recognize that the salaries for other mayors are higher, the salaries for positions are higher, that we do want to be able to attract good people to that work. That being said, I wanted to also discuss, I think, some of the assumptions we're making. I really appreciated councillor Rist approaching the subject with there being a two percent per year increase. However, I think the money that we arrive at at the end of the ten-year period is about eighty-nine thousand or ninety thousand dollars. So how do we kind of rectify that? By going to the first year of the four-year term. So I would like to be able to share a screen if, if I may, if I can do so later. But I, I don't think we need to be locked in on a single figure. I think we can set. I think we can set, our our role, as I understand it, is to set the salary. If we set a salary in the first year of the term, the second year of the term, the third year and the fourth year of the term, I think we have the authority to do that very clearly. And that becomes the mayor's salary, just as we could leave it at 75 or we could make it 90. So I kind of looked at doing 2% per year over that period since the last raise. And I'd be happy to share that just briefly if I may.
Okay, let me let me make you a co-host, JP. And I'll just, if you can get through this in just a couple of minutes, I'd like to get to the public as well.
Absolutely. Let's see if we can. Bear with me. Is the schedule up there?
Yeah, now it is. Yep.
The last time we set the salary was in 2016 at 75,000 dollars. If there were to be a 2% increase, and I hope my math is correct, that would mean in the next year, if it went up 2%, it'd be 76,500. Then compounding that all the way through to the four-year term, it would end in 2025 at 89,63194. And that would be a 2% increase. So I just share that as one consideration to kind of even this out over the time period.
Okay, so you're suggesting, JP, that that when we, when we set the salary, we set it at a yearly amount and increase it each year. So 2022 would be 84.5, just for rounding purposes and so forth until you get to 2025, in which case it would be 8990 in that range.
What I'm suggesting is I I think we could do that. And then now we've kind of established a 2% increase per year, since that's what we were talking about. But I really would not be in favor of going to 90 in 2022, given that we're thinking about a 2% per year increase. So I share this with fellow counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, JP. You can go ahead and.
Bear, bear, bear with me.
At your leisure. Okay. I could probably, I could do it too. There we go. Okay. So again, I want to, I want to re-ask the counselors if you have any commentary around school committee salary, president of city council salary, or are you comfortable with the comments that you've made so far and we can move on to public speak? Uh, Councilor Peak.
Yeah, I just want to say I definitely support an increase in the salaries for our school committee members. They work very, very hard. They deal with, yeah, about half our budget. They deal with some of the most complicated and emotionally charged issues in the community, I can say. And I doubt I'm the only one here that would say it, that there have been many times where I have looked at the things that are on our plate and the things that are on their plate and been like, oh, boy, I'm I'm glad I'm a city councillor. I'm not a school committee member. That looks really, really tough, you know? So like, I think it's like, I I think that there's, I I've always felt that the fact that we we make, I mean, not that, not that our stipends are egregious. But I I've always felt that the the relative, the difference between them was always just seemed a little bit unfair, given the amount of work that they have to do and the incredibly sensitive nature of the work that they do. So I just, I just want to say I I totally support that.
Okay. Counselor Zer.
I'm just gonna echo quickly what my colleague said. Absolutely. They do a significant amount of work week in and week out and deal with very important subjects, which is our students, our children, our schools. So and their stipend definitely warrants what was right being recommended. And then to speak to quickly to the salary increase proposed for the president of the city council, I just, I don't know if the public understands, I mean, A, how much work just members of the council do in general, but how much work is really demanded of the city council president? It's somewhat of a semi-full-time job in a certain way, just having to allocate time during the day, which is definitely complicated for certain counselors who have full-time jobs and really being available for all of those extra meetings with the mayor, with various heads of departments, chiefs of departments. I, I, I would say that certainly I'm not looking, expecting us to have another pandemic, but I wish we could also offer hazard pay because I know how much extra work has had to be done by our current president, and I anticipate in some sort of similar emergency, it's it's just a lot of work. And so it makes complete sense. I don't, I'm glad that there was not a discussion about raising council pay because I think where it is right now is is reasonable. And so that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Zer. Anyone else before I open it up to the public? Okay, anyone from the public? I see that you're already starting to raise your hands. Thank you. Go ahead and virtually raise your hand and we will call on you in order. First up is W. You would introduce yourself and state where you are from.
Wes Hardy, I'm from 154 Hendrick Street in East Hampton, Massachusetts. I just got to say, I really appreciate the comments by Councilor Gomez and Councilor Flood. I really, I'm sort of confused at sort of the, some of the arguments for the salary increase. And as far as the mayoral position is concerned, because everyone keeps saying that, well, we need this to be able to, you know, attract the appropriate level of talent. And I don't think anyone would say that our current mayor is mishandling the city. I don't think anyone would say that she's mishandled anything in the pandemic. I think that most of you, if not all of you, have, you know, spoken pretty glowingly about our our current mayor and and the job that she's done and is doing and probably will continue to do. So it's weird to have that be sort of like the impetus. Well, well, we need to attract the proper talent. Well, I think we have that, right? And we actually attracted it with a lower salary. We attracted the proper talent with a lower salary. You know, I I think, I think we're not going to make everyone happy, right? Because there's definitely going to be people just because the optics of it, people are going to say, nobody should be getting a raise during a pandemic. And I think, you know, a lot of people would sympathize with them in that. I think also there's a very fair argument that people are underpaid. I think the best thing I heard so far was, you know, Councilor Gomez saying like, hey, let's amend this. Let's, or Councilor JP, hey, let's, let's do it on a scale or whatever. I mean, we don't, we don't know what's coming, right? And the reason we don't know what what's coming is because the future is uncertain. And the future was uncertain before COVID. And, you know, our current mayor decided to take, you know, take a shot and and become the mayor of our city at the salary that was there before. So the idea that, well, we have to raise it to attract the proper talent, I don't, I don't know if that's true. I think it's also weird to, you know, to say, well, you know, department heads of this or that make X. And it's like, well, you know, it's it's not a contest, right? It's not a contest who can make the most. I guess in closing, I would just say that I think, you know, the best thing that the council could do on this would be not to punt, but, you know, to compromise and try to make some tough choices. I mean, the city's had to make a lot of tough choices. There's a lot of people out there who literally are losing their life savings, who who are unemployed, who the government had to send out stimulus checks to people and people are like, oh, well, social security doesn't go up enough anyway. And it's like, yeah, okay, we all get it, right? But like, people are struggling. So this doesn't look good. And I think, I think you guys have to recognize that. And the only way to really do it is to amend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Winnie. Joy?
Yeah, I'm here. Hold on. I'm slowly working on it.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for, I guess my video doesn't want to work tonight. That's all right. Um, thank you. Um, first I want to point out that I think that in Dan's assessment in his report, uh, maybe a little skewed. When going back and reading the charter, the city council, and this is under compensation, under C, three-point, uh, three dash one mayor qualifications term of office. The city council shall by ordinance establish an annual salary for the mayor. No order, ordinance increasing the salary of the mayor shall be effective unless it shall have been adopted in the first 12 months of the term for which the counselors are elected. And it provides that such salary is to become effective in January of the year following the next biannual city election. What I read into that is that you can set the salary for the mayoral term of 222 to 226 right now. And that in two years from now, when the new city counselors are elected, within the first 12 months of their election, they can then set the salary for 2026 to 2020, 2030. So this is not locked into a 10-year, from what I read in the charter. This is not locked into a 10-year advancement for the mayoral salary. I think that right now it's rather irresponsible to make that kind of jump for a four-year position when people are losing their jobs and their security due to the virus that seniors and those on fixed incomes right now are hurting with the cost of food, taxes, water, sewer, keep going up and their, their security, their livelihoods are being threatened in a very real way. I have a very strong suspicion, as does the state, that tax receipts will be very low due to businesses closing, businesses not having people coming in and shopping and that your new growth numbers are going to be very low as because people aren't building. People aren't investing in building because the cost of wood and materials are skyrocketing. I just, I think that if this council wants to give the position of a mayoral raise, I have no problem with that. However, I don't think that you should be doing it all in one lump sum. I think that you could give a small increment for the four-year term of 2022 to 2026. And then in two years, when the new city counselors are voted in and come on board, that they can go back and relook at that for the term of 2026 to 2030. And then again, they can do that within the first 12 months of the 2026 cycle and the 2028 cycle because it is specific for compensation to be biannual to the city council to set those ordinances. Really, I just, I just think that this is the wrong time for that kind of a jump being put out there for 10 years. It's, it's just, to me, it's incredible that you're even thinking about it during these trying times where people are really seriously very seriously hurting in in these economic times. I would almost predict that within the next year or two, you're going to be looking at major layoffs like we did in 1996 for our city employees. And I guess that's all I have to say. I don't know if anybody has any other input on the charter, but that's how I rate it. And that's pretty much, I read it per verdam. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Jay Andrazek.
Hi, Jay Andrazek, Division Street, East Hampton. I left East Hampton in 1990 to go to college and I came back in 2011. Had a really good time at college. But in that time, in that 21 years, the tax rate went up 26.69%. Since then, the city has been on a spending spree that would bring incredulity to the drunkest of sailors. Some 39.95% in nine years. That's 66% increase since 1990. And don't think for once that the assessments haven't been going up along with it. And then this last pandemic budget that was put together, a new position was added to the city planning department. And tonight you come before the citizenry asking for another new position as well as a 40, all but 43% increase in the school board stipend and a 20% increase in mayoral remuneration. The citizens, you're asking us for that and we're saying no. That's a no from from Alan in the fifth, who told me that his $100 cost of living adjustment from social security was doubly wiped out by his $200 increase in his sewer and water bill. It it's a resounding no from from Dave in the fourth, who doesn't see why we should be paying east of $495 prices for an East Hampton mayor. I know 600 bucks is not a lot of money. But we don't have it. $15,000 is a lot of money, a lot of our money. And we just ask that you be prudent with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Lynch.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I I obviously know what what goes into the details of the council and the president of the council. And and I think you do a fantastic job. So I don't want to take away from anything there and what presidents have done in the past. But as elected officials in our city, we know kind of what the pay is before we even pull the papers. I knew what it was when I was getting into it. And this is not our careers. And and looking at the school committee, it's also not their career. That's not what they do to feed their families. It's not what they do to pay their mortgage and support their families. These, these elected officials are different than the homeowner rules where the homeowners and the property owners in our city do work and pay for their properties and may not have that extra capital to pay, spend that additional funds where it's needed if we do this raise. We already raised it for the school, the the COLA raises that the pay plan folks got this year's budget. And and we added the health agent on top of the city planner already this year, as noted before. You know, I did make some appropriations that did not pass through the budgets earlier this year, recommending that we we pull back and we we look at it conservatively. Just, just to to keep in mind of the pandemic and the furlough and people in our city and the the businesses that are closing and stuff like that, and really be conscious of the financial downfalls that are happening around us. As far as the mayor's salary, I think it it it's not in line with the current sister cities, as we've discussed already. And I don't want to beat it, beat it into the ground, but when we're talking about an elected position versus a solid position, you know, and and we want to compare the cost of the chief of police with the mayor's salary in East Hampton, the chief of police in Hoyok makes $200,000, where Alex only makes 85,000. So it it's, it's off, that balance is off and it's not there in sister communities as well. So so just taking a look at that. And I think the incentive that we have, that we brought in this year, without raising any taxes, without raising any money, is the incentive of the mayor being a four-year term as opposed to a two-year term. We voted on that. We approved that as a city. And and then that's the new incentive. Let's see where that lands. And we haven't had an election, right, with without viable candidates. There's been elections with candidates that are more than qualified to serve as our mayors, our counselors, our school committees, that that we haven't had that issue and we've given more incentive with a longer terms. So I think, I think that that we're, we're shooting that at problems that haven't even come up in in any conversation. So we don't know where we're going to be financially as a city, as as individuals, as residents in 2022. That's two years from now. That's, that's, we we have no idea where we're going to be. So we really need to take a step back and look at ourselves and see how much we can keep squeezing out of our residents. I think we're really being a little irresponsible as a taxpayer. You know, it's, it's, it's scary. I I think enough is enough with with all the increases Jay said earlier. You know, it's a good point too with this water sewer that's on top of it. $20 plus $20 plus $20 a month is, is equating to $100 a month that people just don't have. We have to pick, look at our our property owners. We passed the CPA funds to help residents who can't pay rent so that the landlords don't lose their, their, their properties earlier this year through CPA money. don't lose their, their, their properties earlier this year through CPA money. Like, we've already identified that there's problems out there financially. We've owned it, we see it. So I, I really think that we need to take a look at this and, and say, is it the right time? Do we look at, at the, the plan JP had, where we take steps back, or, or even look at, at a cost of living like Counselor Gomez said, with, with $80 to $82,000, and make a compromise with the mayor's salary? As far as the elected official positions and the president of the council, you know, I, I, I think we should put that on the back burner for the time being and revisit that in the future and, and leave it at that. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Deb, your hand was up. Are you taking it down? Deborah Lusnia?
It's up, my hand is up.
Okay, you're next.
Hi, my name is Deborah Lusnia, and I live at 38 Ashley Circle in East Hampton. And I just wanted to say that I fully support the proposed salary increases you're considering for the mayor, school committee, and city council president, for all of the reasons that you've stated. As a side note to some of the comments that have been made recently, I'd just like to say, you know, for the last 17 years, I've been involved in working for various causes to benefit the city. And, and all of those years, I've never known there ever to be a time that anyone considered was a good time for increases or spending money. Like, that's never happened in all of my years of experience. My point is that all of those years along the way, there was always one reason or another in our, you know, economy, what was happening in the world around us, or what have you, which people felt like made it not a good time. And so I just kind of would like to put the argument out there that I'm not sure there ever is a really good time. I'm not sure that ever happens or that day ever comes, but I just wanted to share that perspective. The other reason I wanted to speak tonight is because I also wanted to suggest to you that you consider a slightly higher rate for the chairperson of the school committee. You've spoken about the need to acknowledge the increased workload for the president of the city council. And as someone who has served as a school committee member, and also for two terms as a school committee chair, I can attest to the fact that the workload for the chairperson of the school committee is also significantly more than a regular member. While the, the pay that's provided to the school committee is really just a small token of appreciation for the work provided, if we're going to acknowledge the difference for the city council, I would like to suggest that we do the same for the school committee. I think it would be the right thing to do. I can also just share with you that in my last term as school committee chair, we had a number of difficult times and issues, and there were about eight months where I was putting in 20 to 30 hours a week consistently. And I'm guessing, given what's happening today, Cindy Kuzinski is probably putting in far more than that. And, you know, there's always times that are difficult and challenging that require extra, extra time devoted. But I'm just bringing this up because the point is that the workload is significant. There's so much to, to know, to understand, to learn, and there's a lot of state work involved, and it's a significant position. And so I would just like to put that out there for consideration, that to be consistent, to be fair, to be respectful, I think it would be worthy of your consideration to perhaps consider a couple hundred extra dollars, just for the, for the point to be made for the chair of the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing any? Any further comment from the councilors? Counselor Zerret, and then Counselor Rist.
Thank you, President Coniff. I just wanted to point out, because there's some mention of this, and, and so, just to step back, because I didn't say this before, and I think it's important to be made clear, speaking for myself, but I think it's been echoed by my colleagues, that were we asked currently to raise, to raise salaries in light of the pandemic and potential, and the current economic downturn, certainly in the city but abroad? I think we'd say no, but I think it's also important to point out, and, and my colleagues on the finance committee can correct me if I'm wrong, but making these increases in two years, it doesn't raise taxes, it's a budgetary change. And so it's, it's just a difference in allocation of dollars that we're currently already spending. This will not cause us to take more money out of any taxpayers' pockets. It will cause us potentially to make difficult decisions as to, if, were, were we to increase the, the mayor's salary by, say, $15,000, well, who's that coming from? And so those are some of the thoughtful things we're going to have to think of as we move forward, if this is something we vote on. But I did want to make it very clear that unless I'm, I'm wrong and a misunderstanding how the budget works and how the levy works, that this does not, we're, we're not paying more taxes because of this, we're not spending more money, we're spending the same amount of money. So that's, that's an important point to make. I do also appreciate the thoughtfulness of my, my colleagues about thinking about residents of the city, how much they make on average. I think that Counselor Gomez made some salient points. I have to say, I really like the, the creativity of Counselor Kuzinski. But again, just to leave an important note, this does not, this is not spending more money. We are not spending more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Zerret. Counselor Rist?
Just a couple of comments. I would agree that the optics of this seem, on the face of it, difficult during the pandemic, but I want to remind everybody, this doesn't take effect until January 1st, 2022. It is only a $9,500 increase that year, and then another $9,500 or so the year after that. To try to get a, a little bit on what the former Councilman Winnie was saying, the charter does say every biannual election, but if you're worried about optics, we might be able to raise the mayor's salary in the middle of a mayoral term, given the way the charter was written now, it may be legal. But the optics of actually giving a current elected official a raise in the middle of the term scares me a lot. I argue the 10 years because it's from 2016 to 2026. So it's a raise over 10 years, because 2026 is the next time, given my interpretation of the charter, that we can increase the salary if the next council should choose to do so. So I wanted to point that out. And the Counselor Lynch, I understand your concerns, but those concerns were what I said in June about the firefighters. And our revenues are different now, and the firefighters deserve that increase, and you voted in favor of it, and it was a major increase over four years, including an increase that was effective this year, this fiscal year. And don't get me wrong, in hindsight, the council was right to do that, and we will be getting other labor organization, labor unions coming forward. I would like to say that I think we should look at all of our salary positions, our positions for all the labor in the city, with the notion that we want to retain them, which is why we did give a new position to the city planner, so the city planner wasn't overworked. And we, just, just to respond to some of the comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Counselor Rothschild, and then Counselor Flood.
My mouth gets stuck. I just wanted to comment on some of the things I've heard. Counselor Kuzinski, I really liked your approach, and that is something that I would be apt to support if you were to put forth that amendment. I like the creative thinking of still getting to where it should be in a fair way, but incrementally. I thought that was very thoughtful. I also agree with Deb Lusnia that if we do, if we give an increase to the chair of the city council, we should also have a, set a little bit higher for the chair of the school committee for equity. I think that was a valid, a good point. And in terms of, you know, I understand what residents are saying, that we're facing a lot of different challenges, but to me, that's just more reason that we need to have, retain and attract good leaders and good people in our city. So that's how I feel. And thank you, Counselors Zerret, for bringing up the point that it doesn't raise taxes, it just changes how we budget the funds that we're using. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flood?
I just want to speak to this idea of optics, and there's a difference between giving a, a raise in the middle of a four-year term when it's not planned for versus having a stepped approach. If this is planned, I don't see a problem with optics, because we're all agreeing that this is going to increase over time. And I, I just, I would like to stress that I think there's, it's very different than all of a sudden, two years into a four-year term, saying, let's raise the salary. So while I, I respect the concern that Counselor Rist has, and, and we spoke about this as well, I do interpret the charter a, a little differently than he does as well. As former Counselor Winnie said, I do think we have the ability to either revisit this down the road again, or now do a stepped approach where we know there will be gradual increases. It's all out there, it's transparent, if we make a plan that spans several years. And I lost my train of thought, but along, along the lines of, I like JP's approach and Counselor Gomez's approach of just something, something more gradual. It feels a lot better.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say that I like the idea of Counselor Kuzinski. If we present that as a motion, I will second it, and I will support that. Just a few points, first, about the comment from Deb Lusnia. I agree, it's never a good time for the increase, because it's people's money. And when it's people's money, it's never a good time to increase the salary of the elected officials. Every time that we're comparing the mayor position with the fire chief, the police chief, and the superintendent, I don't, I don't see the connection between all those, because the fire chief, the police chief, and the superintendent, their careers. The, the mayor is a political position, they could be only four years. And we, and, and the other point that I want to add is that I agree, probably with the $90,000, $85,000, or whatever we decide at the end, the increase, we can bring good people, but we can bring bad people, too. We can bring people that will make a really great campaign, win the election, and probably that people is not the person that would be more qualified to run the city. So when we only bring you like, saying, we're going to bring better people, better people, better people, no, we cannot predict the future. So we have to be careful with that. And at the end, we all, we have to remember that our position, the mayor's position, is a, is a public service. Just that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Peak?
Oh, man, so many points I want to respond to. I'm going to try and manage this. All right, let's start with the first one. I think that the point that former Counselor Winnie brought up is a interesting one and a good one, that the current charter, as stated, probably would allow us to, to raise salaries in the middle of a term. I also think, as someone who was on the charter review committee, that that was an oversight and a mistake. Because my understanding of this, and if I'm wrong here, then feel free to correct me, was that the real purpose of those raises not going into effect until the next term is that we, as the council and the mayor who signs off on these ordinances, should not be raising our own salaries, right? We should be, that should be, we can set them for the future people, and those future people might be us, but they might not be us. If it were up to me, I would support cleaning that language up, to make it clear that what I definitely would never want is a situation where a, a mayor had, was, was leaning on the current council to raise their specific salary. I think that that's not appropriate. And so I wouldn't necessarily support taking any action on a mayor's salary in the middle of a four-year term. I'd find that more distasteful than raising their salary at a time where there's some real financial uncertainty, which is what we're dealing with now. I do think there is some interesting potential in Counselor Kuzinski's idea of setting this up as a stepped approach. I think that that's something that is, is worthy of discussion. I also think, and I, I don't, I might be alone here, I think that if we're going to do that, we should, if, if that's, if that's the feeling that the council has, that that's the direction we should be going in, that when it comes to the mayor's salary, we should continue that motion and send it back to finance. Because while I like, I, I think that JP's numbers might be all well and good, I think that that is a subject that deserves more deliberation than we're going to get out of it, right here in the middle of a public hearing, with all nine of us having just been presented with that idea right now. So if that's the direction we want to go in, my strong advice is that we send that back to finance and work on the other ones. And, and just finally, I, I would just like to say, kind of broadly, that like, I hear a lot of the concerns about our, our, sort of our fiscal situation, and I just, I, I wish we could see this level of engagement on some of the much bigger appropriations that we send out. I wish we could see this level of engagement when we start talking about sort of our overall plan on how we're going to handle our infrastructure and pay for all of this stuff that's, you know, that needs to be taken care of, and how we're going to maintain benefits for all of our staff. There's some huge conversations that make the $19,000 a year we're talking about here seem like a joke. Huge, huge conversations that do not receive this level of public engagement. And I'm not going to speculate as to why that is, but I'm just going to say that, like, if this is really something that concerns people, I would beg you to get involved more often on this stuff and, and, and have, and have us have these sort of deeper conversations more often, and not just when it's about these sorts of issues that might optically be a little bit more controversial.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Rist?
I just want to say that it sounds to me like Counselor Kuzinski's ideas might be considered by the council, and I, I actually looked into that. I asked the city attorney, can we raise the mayor's salary through ordinance by raising it one year at a time? And his answer, I believe, and I have to check on it, was positive that we could do that. So what we're doing would be, if I understand this correctly, JP, is raising the salary a certain amount on the January 1st, 2022, January 1st, 2023, 2024, and 2025. So we'd have four-year step increases, which I believe we can do. And if it's the council's prerogative to send this back to finance to debate that, I would be okay with that, because it was something I was considering way back when we started. I just didn't think $9,000 the first year, for, for all the raises, and $9,000 the second year was that big. But if that's the council's concern, I'd be happy to do that, to take it back. And I, I'd like to hear from the other members of the finance committee if we want to send the mayoral raise, only the mayoral raise, back to committee to discuss doing an incremental raise over four years, rather than an all-at-once raise. And if, if that's the will of the council, I, I would be in favor of that.
As a, as a sitting member on the finance committee, I am also in favor of it. JP, I, I did the same math that you did earlier today, and I got the exact same numbers that you got, so we're, we're in lockstep on that. But yeah, and I like that idea, JP. So I, I would be in favor of moving this back to finance for a re-review on a annual step increase. I think that makes a little bit more sense. Counselor Gomez, do you have any comments now that you?
He has his finger up, so he must be in favor.
So, given that, do we want to make a motion to move that back to, move that one back to finance?
I will make that motion, Madam President, to continue this public hearing to December 2nd, and to bring this back to finance, a review of incremental step increases. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Motion is second to move only the mayoral salary discussion back to the finance committee. Any further discussion?
Just to, just to reiterate it, to continue the public hearing as well for December 2nd.
Yep. Okay. Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peggy Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing for the mayoral salary is continued. That leaves us with school committee salary and city council president's salary. I see someone from the public has their hand up. I'm going to recognize them before we move into any- I'm going to recognize them before we move into any sort of motions. Jessica Callahan.
So are we, am I allowed to share an opinion anymore about the proposal of the mayor seeking a raise?
I would, I mean, you certainly can, but since we have tabled it for today, and we're gonna, we're gonna have a further discussion in Finance Committee, you may want to attend the Finance Committee, but I'm certainly not going to prevent you from saying something at this time.
I I guess, just in case life happens and I don't get to that meeting, I just want to put out there that I would just like to bring to all of your attention that a paraprofessional for the city of East Hampton makes less than a year than she's requesting for a raise. And I understand that the jobs are different, but you cannot convince me that a paraprofessional who works on the front line, some of those paraprofessionals are changing diapers every day, some of those paraprofessionals are getting bit by kids with autism spectrum disorders and other disorders, some of those paraprofessionals are teaching kids whose primary learning language is something other than English at home, mental health issues, family health And she's asking for a raise that is the equivalent of one of their salaries. And I just, that breaks my heart that we pay frontline workers so little, and yet that is just what she wants for a raise this year. What people live off of an entire year, supporting their families, is what she wants for a raise on top of what she's already making. I just want to put that in perspective.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. I want to, I know the mayor has her hand up, and I want to be really, really clear to everyone on this call. The mayor has had absolutely zero input on this. In fact, I think if it was her idea, this would not be something we'd be talking about right now. This is not a request from the mayor. This is a job of the legislative branch to review these in our first twelve months of every new term, which is what we're doing and how this came about. So the mayor has been completely uninvolved in any conversations around this, and this is not a request coming from her office. It's a request, it's actually not a request, it's the job of the legislative branch to review this in the first year of every term, which is what we're doing. Mayor?
I challenge the mayor to refuse it and donate it to frontline workers in the community, whatever branch she chooses.
Mayor?
Yeah, I first would have to be reelected. I did not ask for this raise. It's a part of a legislative function, as the president said. I also have due respect for paraprofessionals, and I think you're grossly underpaid. I have some suggestions around how you organize with the union, and would happy to, I'm happy to discuss that offline when, you know, while it's not on this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, I don't work for the town of East.
Jessica, Jessica, we have to have, hang on one second, someone else had their hand up. Counsel Rist?
Well, you already stated the fact, and as the chairman of the Finance Committee, I have to restate, the mayor is not involved in this, and the mayor did not request it. And I want everybody to know, this is our job as a city council, to look at this every, beginning of every term, and stipends and boards. And I was just, I know there's a lot of misinformation, thinking that we're giving the mayor a raise, an immediate raise, or that she asked for. I have to echo what Counsel Coniff said. This is just not what, the mayor didn't ask for, and she doesn't get it unless she's reelected. So it's upsetting that that's out there, because it's wrong. Sorry.
So I know we have a couple of folks who have their hands raised. I'm gonna ask if you, since we've kind of taken the mayoral salary off the table for this public hearing, if you have any comments around either school committee or city council president's salary, then go ahead and raise your hand for those. And if you have comments around president, I mean, mayor, there will be due time in the next public hearing for that. Sarah McGeehan?
Okay, sorry, I had to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so first, this is my first time coming to one of these meetings. I'm from Cherry Street. I also am a public employee, not for the city of East Hampton, I work for the state of Massachusetts. I want to say thank you to all of you, because I do think there is very much a misperception out there that the mayor is seeking a raise. And I very much, by listening to everything that you have said, very understood clearly. I do, however, do think the optics with the pandemic and what we're going through and the discussion coming up, it puts, puts people off a little bit. And so I think from the constituents, you are going to have people, and I understand there's no good time, I really do, there's no good time to ask for this, but right now, where people don't even know if they're gonna have a job next month, next year, you know, with such uncertainty, if the businesses are not in the town, and the businesses closes, the money that we've now set aside, it's got to come from somewhere. So then people are starting to worry, where is this money coming from? And I understand the budgets. I also want to point out, I do understand, I have workers that have, that work for me that have been with the state for twenty years, they make more money than me. There is unequal pay in public service because of career, career ladders, people being there longer. So when we're talking about people making more money than other people, but I just want to put that aside, I did want to say that. I do want to say that I appreciate all of what you said. I think some of you guys have some great ideas. I think that, yeah, the, the, the job, definitely, I was surprised to hear that the salary was that low. I do think it's public service, you know, when you're getting into it, but yes, I do think going forward in the future, there's an increase as long as following. I do have to say again, though, yes, we're, you're tabling this until December. I just don't know if making the decision right now, is that, do you have to make the decision right now, or can we get a little bit further into the spring before making the decision? Just because of optics. So that's just my, my opinion. I mean, you guys are gonna do what you want to do, but again, mentioning that I work for the state, and my job being a social worker for the state, I've been working a lot of hours, and I'm seeing a lot of more people coming through my way.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, Wes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, so for the, for the city council president and for the other positions, you know, and yeah, whatever, it doesn't like look great or whatever, but I don't think necessarily that that, that I would have as big of an issue with that. And I believe the reason I wanted to ask about these is because I, I wanted to know if someone on finance, or maybe someone just on city council would know, the raises, a raise given to any of the people on any of those committees or the city council president, that wouldn't affect any like long-term liabilities of the city. Am I correct about that?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I don't understand the question, Wes. Liabilities, you mean, I just don't understand the question. Can you clarify?
Yeah, so, because, well, I don't, I feel bad, because I don't, I'm not, I don't want to back, I don't want to backdoor a question about the mayoral thing, because I know you guys tabled that, but I guess, I guess I, that's, I mean, if, if pension, if, if pension and retirement benefits are based on pay, right, and, and we do either, you know, a two percent CAGR or whatever on, on mayoral pay, you know, has anyone run, run the numbers on the pension or whatever else liabilities would come with that versus, I mean, if you increase the, the city council, the city council president or city councillors or school committee or any of those people, I mean, it's sort of like, yeah, like, yeah, it's a one-time, it's a one-time increase, that's then recurring expense, but there isn't an increasing liability when you do that, like there would be if the pay raise, say, affects pension benefits and things like that. So that, that's where my question is coming from, and yeah, I'm sorry if I'm like dragging back to where, because I know you guys moved that, but that, that's what my question is based on.
I think it does affect pension, but I have to be honest with you, we didn't look at that. But since most mayors aren't lifetime in their positions, the pension increase isn't a great deal. Whatever retirement that the mayors get is based on their employment, so I don't consider it a lot, but I'll look into that.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just, it's just something to consider, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Kozinski, sorry, your hand?
Just to address that specific question, yes, it does affect the pension benefits over time, but the liability is limited to the number of years that would be charged against the city. So if, for example, one worked for the city for six years, they wouldn't be eligible for retirement. I believe you have to be at least ten years to be eligible for retirement. If you then make it to twenty years by combining public service work with Massachusetts or another municipality, then the only liability to the city would be the liability for the years worked for the city, and then the years worked for, let's say you worked for a school in another district or for another municipality, they would pick up the liability for those years, if I understand this correctly.
Thank you, Counsel Kozinski. I think you are correct.
So there's no other folks queuing up to speak? Counsel Kozinski?
Oh, if no one else is queuing up, I did want, did have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Salaries. And I'd ask again to share the screen, and I wanted to point out that I think that counselors and school committee people, and correct me if I'm mistaken, I at least put in ten hours a week on the job, between all the responsibilities, the meetings, preparing for meetings, the education, the reading of the laws in Massachusetts, working with constituents, doing our best to respond to constituents, emails, texts, phone calls, meetings, I could go on and on. You, you guys know how much you work, and you know how much, well, some of you know how much the school committee members work, and we heard from the former chair, who said that when, in her last term, I believe she said she worked twenty to thirty hours a week. So I'm suggesting that we work, on average, ten hours a week. I don't know if you know, but the minimum wage in Massachusetts, I, let's see if I can share this, we're talking about, can you see the screen now?
Yep.
Yeah, the minimum wage in January two, for 2022 will be fourteen twenty-five an hour. If you work ten hours a week and you earn a salary as a school committee member, you will be getting two dollars and sixty-nine cents an hour. For city counselors with a four thousand dollar a year salary, that ten hours per week translates to seven dollars and sixty-nine cents per hour. And we wonder why there is jumps, and you hear large percentages. I think it's because the positions, over time, have been underpaid, and the cities benefited by that, and we've managed to get good people, so I'm not advocating huge jumps, but I thought it was important for everyone to see two sixty-nine an hour and seven sixty-nine an hour.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Counsel Rist?
I don't think Counsel Kozinski is suggesting we raise the stipends for, for council and for the school committee. I like what he said with regard to working by the hour, but I never have considered, and nor would I, my position on the council as a vocation, I didn't, over twenty-five years, run for office because I needed to pay. It's not a vocation, it's really a volunteer job. The salaries and increases are based on respect, like the increase for the school committee is based on the respect we have for them, and it is still low, but again, we're incrementally doing that, and fortunately, over, that can be looked at again in two years. I would strongly advise this council, whether I'm on it or not, certainly would be a question coming up, but that you not look at raising council salaries, because my feeling is, we should be doing this because we want to be a public servant. That's just my own opinion. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Zarrett?
Well, I think that Counsel Kozinski makes some really salient points about breaking down those numbers and how they, they translate to the amount of time that, that we work. I think the functional term here is, is stipend as opposed to salary. And as with really any other industry, typically that's associated with a flat fee for, you know, some sort of service. So in this case, we're providing our services, elected officials, to the residents of the city, and you know, whether we spend an hour a week or forty hours a week, it doesn't make a difference, although I do agree with the sentiment, and there are times when I, I've reflected on that. And so I, I'm not saying that your points are not well-taken, but I think that this is not a salary in a formal sense, it's, it's kind of a flat fee, essentially, just like if one of us were to attend a conference and be paid to speak, or be paid as a consultant. And so it is a little different, but again, it's not something I haven't thought of before, for sure, so.
Counsel Flood, and then Counsel Peake?
I'd like to admit my naivety and fess up that even when I ran for election last year, I had no idea there was a stipend. I came to the table because I wanted to, but I do want to say that in thinking of creating more equity and more inclusion, the idea of the stipend does, it, it makes me wonder if more people knew that. I mean, is that money available for babysitters? Is that money available for, does it free up those hours for somebody to be able to come to the table who has not come to the table? So although I just came out of my own volunteerism, I have been thinking about that a lot, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I would love to see every seat contested every election, and I wonder why we don't get that. And, you know, I think this is a piece of the puzzle that we should continue to talk about, because if, if this will help bring more people to the table, then I, I think it's worth more discussion in the future, again, as the city grows, and as our finances grow, and we're able to expand in areas. I do think this is an important discussion to keep, to keep up with as we move forward.
Thank you. Counsel Peake?
Okay, I say this with nothing but love and respect for my colleagues. I think I've, I'm a little bit lost on where this discussion is going. Are we debating something? Like, I mean, I think we all agree that the stipend is not like a living wage, and it probably shouldn't be, and we're here to do volunteer work and whatever, but like, I mean, and I think that JP, I think that that is what you put up is, is important from the point of view of like helping the public to contextualize like what we're really talking about here. But like, what are, just for the purpose of, I know we have a couple other items here, like what are we, what are we discussing right now?
We are now, prior to your hand going up, I was going to call for a motion on the two remaining items of the public hearing, the school committee salary, and the city council salary, and any amendments thereto. So Counsel Rist?
Do you want me to make a motion, Madam President?
Well, if you, do we want to go forward with school committee salary and city council president's salary?
I think we can, because we can still have discussion if there's more discussion per item. Let me make that motion, then.
Yep, that's what I would suggest.
I move that the city council amend Chapter Two, Section Two dash seventeen of the city ordinances for the city council, school, I'm sorry, for the school committee's salary from fourteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars annually per member, effective January 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second to change the annual salary for the school committee to Motion is second to change the annual salary for the school committee to $2,000 from $1,400 annually. Any further discussion? Counselor Kuzinski.
I move to amend to allow for the city, for the school committee chair to receive $2,250.
$2,250, did you say?
$2,250.
Okay.
That would be proportional to the increase we are considering for the city council president.
Okay, a second to that amendment, second, okay. All right, so let's, let's do the amendment first. Any discussion on the amendment proposed by Counselor Kuzinski? Counselor Rist?
I'm in favor of the amendment. Barbara, are you okay with that language?
That's fine.
Just the city, just the chairman gets $2,250.
Right.
You're okay, all right.
Same as the wording as the council.
All right, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Barbara. This is on the amendment only.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zarrett?
You're muted, Owen.
Oh, yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Motion passes for the amendment to increase the chair of the school committee's salary to $2,250 annually. Now we have a main motion of the remainder of the school committee's salary increased to $2,000. Any discussion on that?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zarrett?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
I will make a motion to amend Chapter 2, Section 2-18 of the city ordinances, called City Council Salary, to set the annual salary for the council president as $4,500 effective January 2, 2022.
Second.
Motion, I've never seen you all so quiet all at the same time. Motion and a second for the president's salary to move to $4,500. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
No.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Motion passes, eight to one. Okay, we still have that, that wraps up the salary changes. We still have a couple of other items for the public hearing, one being the departmental revolving funds. Counselor Peak, do you want to take that?
No, that's me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Rist.
However, I would like to ask that Counselor Peak do the next one first, as I must take a quick break, if that's all right.
You guys, do you guys need a five-minute break? Okay. We will adjourn for five minutes. We'll be back in five, three minutes of eight. JP and Erica, are you back? Salem, are you back? Okay. We're just waiting on JP and Erica then.
Thank you for the break.
Okay, we're all back. Meeting is now back in session. Okay, Counselor Rist, do you want to now take the amendment to the administration, Chapter 2?
Yes, this is a revolving account request that came from the Department of Public Works and the Planning Department, as well as from the auditor. In reviewing this, the auditor and I realized that we have two steps to this. First, we have to agree to Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2 of Mass. General Laws and establish the ability for the city to create department revolving funds. That's a general ordinance allowing department revolving funds to be created. The second, the reason for that is revolving funds. I don't know what that was, Peg.
Somebody just was off mute.
All right. In order for any department to request a department revolving funds, we need a general ordinance that allows them. And Valerie agreed to this. By the way, just as a comment, I asked Val to be here in case the councilors have questions, but her father just passed away. So I will do my best to answer the questions on this, but this is fairly straightforward. The second, the second part of the motion is to create a revolving fund for the DPW. So I will be presenting first an ordinance, to create the ordinance allowing for departmental funds, Section 2-7 of our ordinances. And secondly, I will be asking, once the council approves that, then I'll be asking that we allow for a revolving fund for the Department of Public Works for electric vehicles. So that's how this is going to work.
And Counselor Rist, the, the general reason for this is that it allows a department or an area for a specific item, use funds in that, in the way that they need to if they have a revolving account without having to come back for an appropriation each time.
That's correct. As they accumulate revenue, say for the electric vehicles, they would be allowed then to put that into the revolving account, as I understand it. And that's what the thought was behind electric vehicles being charged. There would be some revenue gain there. And therefore, the revolving account would allow it. There was a chart that came with that. I don't know if you'd like me to share that screen, but that's in the second motion, which, which will show, what happened? Which will show the different, there's limits on the revolving fund. In the Department of Public Works, for instance, it's a limit of $20,000, the spending limit, to use the revolving funds for maintenance, for any other things that are needed to continue the electric vehicle charging stations. So that's how the revolving fund is used by the department. Once it's established, they put the revenue in, they use it for maintenance and other needs for the electric vehicle charging stations.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Kuzinski?
In terms of setting, first, setting up the accounts, we set up an ordinance that says we will go ahead and have this process and allow for it. No one else could use it without coming to the council, no other departments, and setting up a revolving fund, I would presume. Okay. Do we further annually review these revolving funds and any expenditures from the fund? I would assume so, but maybe you can just help us with that.
I don't have an answer to that, except we review it as we would through the auditor, all of our revenue and expenses each month, and we have a standing agenda item on the city council. So the review is concurrent with our review of all expenses and finances. There is nothing in the law, I didn't read it that carefully, that allows for the city council to specifically look for revolving funds, I mean, to audit these revolving funds. So I don't have an answer to that specifically, JP, but I, I think we can do it in a number of ways. Because we are, we are allowed to see all of the expenses and how the city spends its money, as, as is the public. So when we review expenses and revenues, that will be part of it, I imagine. It would be a great question for Val. If you want to get that answer, I would ask you to email her, give her a few days, though. Thank you. Does that help at all?
I think it does, and I think, I think we also have, if we can set the amount now, I would imagine that annually, or whatever time period we would like, to go back and set the amount that could be spent from the funds, should we feel a need to do so.
The second motion does set the EV amount at $20,000, that's what their request was. So that's, that's the second motion regarding the specific revolving account for the Department of Public Works. The spending limit is $20,000.
I'm comfortable with this.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the public? Have any comments about the revolving fund account? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Rist?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion first to establish the ability to create revolving accounts. That the city, I move that the city council approve adding a new Section 2.7 to the, to Chapter 2 of, of the city ordinances, which establishes and authorizes revolving funds for use by the city departments under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2. Second.
Motion is second to establish revolving funds for use by city departments. Any further discussion?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zarrett?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So now I will make a motion on the revolving fund for the DPW, just to go over it a little bit. It establishes an electric vehicle charging station and bike share program revolving fund. It's under the Department of Public Works. The fee charges are other receipts credited to the fund for charging stations, fee and charges. The expense payable from the fund, cost of operating, maintaining and future expansion and promotion of EV charging stations and bike share program. It is for the fiscal year 2021 and subsequent years. The spending limit is set at $20,000. So when we establish this revolving fund, this table, which is included in the, in the package, is included as part of the motion. So if no one has any questions, I will make a motion to establish this electric vehicle revolving fund. All right, hearing none, move that, I move that the city council establish a revolving fund in accordance with Mass. General Laws and Section 2.7 of city ordinances for the Department of Public Works, specific to electric vehicle charging stations and bike share program, and to fix the maximum amount that may be spending in fiscal year 2021, beginning on July 2020 as follows, and it includes the table. Whoa.
Excuse me, Dan. Mary St. Ange, can you remain on mute? And I'm going to also take you off camera for now. Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
The motion, just to finish the motion, beginning July 1, 2020, as follows, there is a table and the spending limit would be $20,000.
Second.
Motion is second to set a $20,000 spending limit and create a revolving fund for the DPW. Any further discussion?
Lindsay Rothschild? Owen Zarrett?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Are you all done then, Counselor Rist? Counselor Peak, the position of health director.
Thank you, Madam President. So the Rules and Government Relations Committee met on Monday and met with our current health agent and the head of our Board of Health, as well as the mayor, to discuss this plan to create a new position of health director. This, this position would help us. I think for everyone who's been following everything going on, not just with COVID, but even before that, this was an identified area where the city had a lot of needs that were not necessarily being met. And it was something that we, we felt, that's been a priority of the mayor for a long time. But at this point, you know, I think the idea was that adding this position would make, it would help sort of the department to sort of grow and start being run more like some of the other departments. If it's okay, I would ask Mayor LaChapelle to give a little presentation or just give a few, a few words. a few, a few words about sort of her impetus for doing this whole thing and, and what that would look like.
Did you give her a heads up you were gonna?
Nope, nope, I didn't. She just gave a great summary of it at our meeting, so I thought she might want to do the same, but perhaps she was called away. I will, you said, basically, the idea would be to just to add this to our, the position of health director to our pay plan, to sort of transition into having more of a department head for that position. Councilor Rist, I see, or sorry.
Well, I was first, hang on, Dan. I, as, as also a member of the Rules Committee, I think, you know, part of the rationale around this was, you know, if you start to think about public safety holistically, you know, we certainly think about the police and we think about firefighters, but this is also a significant component when we talk about maintaining the safety of the residents of East Hampton. This is not a small piece of that triple threat. So I think part of it, I don't want to speak for the mayor, I see she's back, but I think part of it was, when you think about public health and you think about public safety, this department deserves a leader and deserves to be part of the department head structure and to have the staff that is now freed up to do the tasks that are aligned to public health versus what we have now, which is people are running around trying to get everything done, and there is no department head. Mayor, I will now give the floor to you.
Yeah, I mean, just to dovetail off of what you were just saying, President Coniff, public health, I mean, certainly because of COVID, but even before, I would be presenting or offering this up. You know, a director position, you know, the, the big difference between a health agent and a director of a department is vision and holding that vision for the department, but also working on that vision collaboratively with other department heads. Adding, I purposely expanded the Health Department, and we've shifted the Healthy Youth Coalition Grant into that department, as well as expanded our food inspection, because we were only, we had the capacity to only do half of them every year unless there was a complaint. The Health Director also can manage grants and, and seek more grants, and we anticipate that as well. But for the big part is, when we're looking at health and public health in our, in our community, we're looking at the mental and behavioral health of our residents, addiction, you know, unhealthy relationships in a domestic situation, and you really have to pull a lot of resources together, think a good, clear plan. It's a set of skills that's above just ministerial, as a health agent often is.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Rist?
The mayor is not funding this at the present time, is looking at the budget process and the future. One of the things I discussed with her, and she'll look into it, of course, is whether cannabis impact money can be used. And one of the reasons for that is because our health, cannabis does impact the health of our community. There are some who feel it's a gateway drug, and, and there's the Healthy Youth Coalition and education for our youth, all of that ought to be under the Department of, our, our Health Department, and a director can organize that, along with opioid addiction and mental health areas. So I'm hoping it can be funded in, in, in the future, not now, with maybe these novel ways of using cannabis impact money or other ways, but I think it's absolutely necessary, given our, the perspective of health in our community, especially around mental health, opioid addiction, and our healthy youth, getting them, getting them educated to cannabis and, and opioid and all the other things that affect our youth today. And that education can be best served under the Health Department. Thank you.
Councilor Kuzinski?
Just to add on to what Councilor Rist has said, I, I agree that the position could certainly be used to perhaps be funded by cannabis monies and be instrumental in terms of education, but I would add that I believe it would also be instrumental as to the benefits of cannabis in our society and as a medicinal drug in helping folks, and to also examine all the effects of recreational marijuana.
Counselor's there? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Counselor's there?
Sorry, did, did Counselor Peak want to speak first, or?
Nope, I was just cutting you off. That was bad of me. You can go.
I agree with the sentiment about cannabis impact. I hadn't even thought about that. I would politely refute that cannabis is a gateway drug, and I actually think that having a, health, a, a position like this, to perform this kind of education, like Counselor Kuzinski stated, would be invaluable. One of the things that has arisen out of the legal cannabis industry, certainly in our city, is kind of this, this request multiple times by residents for better education around understanding cannabis products and what they, how they're used, what happens, what they look like, what happens if our children encounter them. And, and some of these things are, you know, I've, I've spoken to the members of the industry, and it's kind of beyond what some of them can do. I know, I'm digressing here, but I just wanted to say that's a great idea. I also just want to speak to the importance of the position in general. If there were a way to create it and fund it now, you know, this pandemic, we're, we are at our limits in terms of what we have available in our Health Department, and Bree and the entire board is doing an amazing job, but this position in this situation, which likely we are going to be seeing the effects of COVID-19 for quite some time, and certainly going forward, if there is a vaccine that's made available, a position like this will be able to educate our residents. And again, to touch on what Councilor Rist said, the opioid epidemic is killing communities, and it's killing people, and to be able to talk about options in our community to remediate against this, I've spoken a little bit to our new fire chief about Narcan boxes. We need to do a lot of education. I'm kind of rambling here because I'm just kind of grabbing onto some of the things that were said, but I'm completely in favor of this position, and there's some great ideas being tossed around here, so, thank you.
Counselor Peak?
Yeah, so just to clarify, for the benefit of the public, or anyone just dropping in on this, we won't be having any sort of vote tonight on funding this particular position. If it's funded prior to next year's budget, that'll be a separate conversation. All we're doing right now is amending our classification and pay plan in order to make that a job that somebody can have, so that they can move forward with that conversation. With that said, I really do think it's really important, for a lot of the reasons that people brought up, that we do, this is just, this is my belief, we need to have somebody in charge of all of this who can actually look forward and plan and seek out money and is not just reacting to things on a day-to-day basis. And anyone who was involved in last, the last budget hearings, or has been following the stuff at all, knows that for a long time, for no fault of any one person, just as the, sort of a lack of resources, our Health Department has been very much in reaction mode, like, there's been things that they know that they should do, that they have not had the resources to do, they've been having to sort of triage and, and focus on, you know, sort of the most pressing things. So, you know, when we look at areas where I think we need to maybe grow a little bit and work, I think that this is definitely one of them.
Counselor Rist?
Just to clarify my statement on cannabis being a gateway drug, there are many in the community that oppose legalization of cannabis because they thought that, and all I'm saying is, education of our youth would prevent that from becoming reality at all, and therefore, any benefits as well as the effects of cannabis, and to, to prevent opioid addiction, starting at the cannabis level, which it may not, is, to me, it's about education, and that's all I'm saying, is, we need to make sure that the Healthy Youth Group and our Health Department has the ability to educate on all of the problems of drug addiction. And I, that's all I was saying about that. It was just to try and clarify that that's what I'm hoping education will do, to prevent any notion that there would be a gateway drug to cannabis.
Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. Now, I appreciate that, Councilor Rist, and, and, you know, I think that the idea of using cannabis impact money for this position, I think is a great idea. You know, I think, because, because that way, even if there is an educational component, you know, I, I think it would be important for people to understand that the research shows really clearly that places that have legal cannabis have much lower rates of opioid addiction, and people turn to that for pain as opposed to opioids, and people should know that, and that's important, and not that that's what we're debating right now, because we're not, and I think that this position, I think, is important because, you know, as we look at hopefully opening up at, at some point in the future, like, positive thinking, right? Food trucks and restaurants and all these things need to get inspected, and we just don't have that capacity at the rate that we were seeing those, those new businesses coming in. And so I'm hoping, really hoping, that that's going to be a thing again. And, you know, we did also, you know, with an ordinance recently, the Health Inspector is going to have to, you know, enforce the plastics ban as well. So there are things that we are asking that department to do that I think would make sense for them to have a, a leader. So I just want to say that I'm in support of this.
Now I will open it up, any other councilors? Okay, I'll open it up to the public, if the public has any comments around this particular topic. Go ahead and raise your hand virtually. I'm not seeing anyone. Nope, not seeing anyone. So, go ahead, Counselor Peak.
Okay, I will make a motion to amend chapter seven, article two, classification and pay plan, section seven, seventeen A, by adding the position of health director at pay grade G.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second to add a health director position under level G. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, that looks like that wraps up our public hearing. I will take a motion to close the public hearings.
Second?
Motion is second. Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
And the public hearing is mercifully now closed. We'll move in then to the remainder of our standing committee reports. We had just done, Councilor Rist?
Just before you skip over finance, since we did change our agenda, the Monday meeting on the 23rd will include debate over step increases for the mayor's salary. I asked Counselor Kuzinski to send me your nicely done spreadsheet by email, because I do want to write a draft ordinance and send it to the city attorney. He did indicate that this was possible, but I want to get his okay, that we can actually do this. I'm almost certain we can, but I think it's appropriate that I make sure when I interpreted his email from months ago, I was correct. So if you could send me that, I'll, I'll write up some draft language, and the numbers will be debated, I believe, at the, is that okay?
Do you know what date for the continuation of the public hearing?
It was the second.
Was the second?
So the 23rd, we're going to discuss it. The 30th is specific to one Ferry Street, so I don't want to add anything to that. That could be a long discussion.
All right.
Thank you. That concludes finance.
All right, moving on to public safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. We scheduled the meeting for December 1st at 6:30, and that's conclude. Easy.
So much buildup for that. Appointment Committee, I believe that I, I don't want to give it away, but Counselor Rothschild, would you like to give the report?
I would, thank you, President Coniff. So in our meeting today, we reorganized, and the committee is now myself, Counselor Flood, and Counselor Kuzinski. So I am the new chair of the, of the Appointment Committee, and Eric, Counselor Flood is the new clerk of the Appointment Committee. Our next meeting is Wednesday, December 2nd, at 5 o'clock. Is this, is this where I moved, had to move all the, okay, and I'd like to make a motion to move all 33 reappointments to the, the, to the, to the committee.
Second?
Motion second to move 33 mayoral reappointments to the Appointment Committee. Any discussion?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes. Got it?
Yes. What was the last thing? So, wait, do you have a good thing to say at the end? That concludes, that's it.
Oh, boy. Ordinance, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. Ordnance Committee met on last Wednesday, the 11th, where we discussed the highway business zoning amendment. We will meet again on Wednesday, the 25th, at 6:30 PM, and, and again, we're going to be discussing the highway business cannabis amendment, and hopefully, a couple of other. Yeah, it looks like Counselor Rist has a question for me.
Hey.
Well, I was just going to suggest that that's a bad date, the date before Thanksgiving, and I, that's the reason we didn't do it. Is that really okay?
I, I hear you, and we, we talked about that, but we decided that it was better to meet before, and that was the only date that worked, so.
Okay.
We, we, we're dedicated to the cause.
I would then just
Okay.
follow up on that to say, I think the public, if there's any way to change this, this is a very important discussion. We're discussing zoning amendments. The public really has a right to be involved, and I think it's just, a lot of people are, are, are not going to be available for that meeting, if there's any.
Well, I guess I'll say this, Counselor Kuzinski, you know, it, you know, whatever people do in their, in their, in their time is up to them, but, you know, I, I'm hoping that people are not going to be traveling during this time, when we're looking at, like, the highest numbers of COVID that we've ever seen in the history of the, this virus. And this is a virtual meeting, so you can attend from anywhere. So, you know, keeping those two things in consideration, I think, are important. This is not the last time that we're going to be discussing it. This is not the la, this not the, the first time we are discussing it. And so, just because I feel like it's important for us to meet again to talk about this, you know, I, I, we're going to be having another public hearing on this topic again, and so, you know, I, I hear that, but I, I think that the obstacles are different than if we were having this at, you know, 50 paces. And so, you know, that was, that was my logic, that you can, you can attend this meeting from anywhere. So I'm, I'm hoping that people will.
Counselor Flood?
I just want to emphatically support Counselor Derby's comments and sentiments on that. This is really something that you can do from anywhere, and I would really hope that people are not traveling.
You're here. And, and so, and like I said, you know, I, 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 we, we've had a lot of public input on this, and I want to have more public input on this, and we have another public hearing that's going to be December 2nd on this particular issue. But at this point, we're pretty much down to the, the, the final wording and us taking a vote on it, but, you know, and we know, and we are all, all of us, I would say, you know, I can speak for the whole committee, that we're all welcome to, you know, accept correspondence from community members on this, you know, via email or phone or however they want to get in touch with us. So, and, and we have been working on this issue for months at this point. So I just want to make that clear. So, that being said, I think, my computer froze, so I can't, I, I think I'm going off memory that I think I need to have an extension on a brake, the brake noise.
Correct.
The engine brake. So I guess in the form of a motion, I'd ask for 30 days.
Second.
Motion second to extend the engine brake ordinance proposal 30 days. Any discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
And Salem Derby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
And that concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. I want to back up to appointments. Counselor Rothschild, did you set another meeting for 12:02?
12:02 at 5 o'clock.
Okay, I didn't hear that. I apologize. Property, Counselor Zera.
Thank you, President Coniff. Just really wanted to kind of close the loop here by congratulating Counselor Rothschild and her Chair of Appointments and that we'll miss you on property. And your minutes were exceptional, so I appreciate that and timely as well. So thank you very much. So we will need to discuss appointing another clerk. I think also, like I stated last time, in all fairness, potentially discuss a reorganization since we do have new members. So we'll do that in our next meeting, which I still have to figure out when that will be. I'm just going to address new business quickly first. We have a request to evaluate poll locations on Main Street near True Heart Drive for, I think it's Casey Firearms, or I know that it's the, it's, it's to, in order for Eversource to bring a electricity to Casey Tactical down there near the Southampton border. So in the form of a motion, I'd like to move that to the Property Committee.
Second.
Motion is second to move the poll location request from Eversource to the Property Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then regarding our other agenda item, the evaluation of the dog park, I think that, I'll say a few things. We've been working on this for a couple of years. We underwent, I think, a very vigorous process identifying sites within the city. Ultimately, seven city-owned parcels of the city were identified, as well as two in Nantucket Park. And we researched all of those. None of those, for a variety of reasons, were seen as fit for this project. We were granted $9,000 in CPA money in order to pay a consultant to do those initial preliminary sketches. And again, this is to begin the process just to apply for a $25,000 Stanton Design Grant, which could then potentially lead to a larger building grant. As many of you know, we, it appeared that that project was kind of at a standstill. And then in somewhat of a Hail Mary, Counselor Rist, through discussions with Director Mason of the Parks, had identified a potential parcel behind the cemetery near the pond that was used as an old pond dredging site, as well as, I believe, a staging area for construction of the high school. And we had requested that the Parks Commission vote to evaluate if we could even consider this site. And unfortunately, in the last seven months of this pandemic, that commission has not been able to meet for a variety of reasons. My understanding is that there are some technological challenges by members of the Parks Commission. That's not casting any dispersions. It's just stating objective fact that has been delivered to me by Director Mason. I will say that I feel a degree of frustration over that, that we have a committee within the city that is unable to meet. I question if there was some necessity for them to have to meet, what would be done there? And that concerns me. But again, that's not calling out or casting spurs at a particular person on the committee. It is just pointing out an operational issue within our, our city and our city government. So I don't see at this current time, and I'm certainly welcome to take feedback from my colleagues, I don't see how this project or this agenda item can proceed forward for now. Certainly, if we were to be offered a viable site to consider, and I, and frankly, at this point, I really do think that we have to have a more robust conversation about potential sites within Nantucket Park. People walk their dogs there on a regular basis. The majority of the city does use that as a dog walking site. And I do not see why we can't consider a formal park there. That being said, I'll make a motion at this time to remove this agenda item without prejudice for potential consideration at a further time.
Second.
Motion is second to remove without prejudice the discussion of the dog park from the property agenda. Any discussion? Barbara? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Peak?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo sort of what Counselor Zera said. I have no idea what's going on with the Parks Commission, but given that, you know, there are still presumably decisions being made about our parks, I find it a little bit disturbing that they've been unable to meet in any capacity over the course of this entire COVID thing. We have, you know, folk who have no computer, who call into our meetings on their phones into Zoom and are able to teleconference like that. I don't understand what's going on here. And given that there's an item that's of importance to the city council that's been before them this entire time, I would really love an explanation as to why it was somehow impossible. Like, do they not have phones? I don't get it. And I would really love an explanation, particularly, you know, as it comes up for sort of reappointment time. Like, I want to know what is making it so difficult for these people to participate, given that this is an important issue that we've had before them.
Okay. Counselor Kozinski?
I certainly find challenges sometimes with the video and with the microphone, and I apologize. So anyone who is having challenges, I certainly can appreciate that it's not easy for everyone, and probably for members of the Parks Commission, to use Zoom. However, I was wondering if there's any landlines or phones that can be connected to teleconference? Does the city have that capacity? Could, let's say, the director of the Parks Department, if they had the ability for someone to call in, in the old days, they used to use like speaker conference on the table, and that was allowed. Mayor, anyone else? Do we have such items?
Anyone can just call into a Zoom. There's a number and you dial it. You don't need to have a phone. You could have just a landline and dial the number that's in the Zoom invitation, and you'll be on it. And as you see, even in this meeting, you'll see phone numbers appear. And that means that they're just dialed in. So it is, I mean, absent the fact that they don't even have a phone, that, that would be the only reason that they couldn't meet. And I don't know, Counselor Zera, if you're aware, if that is one of the hurdles.
A couple of things. I mean, I'm assuming these individuals have phones. Again, I don't want to make assumptions. I was told in an email today that I, I shared with council leadership that, at least I didn't share the response, oh, I think the response was shared with you, but some individuals don't have cell phones. But I find that if you're asked, if you're, if you're assuming a certain role and part of the requirements of that role are to be able to attend meetings, whether it be in person or virtually, there should either, you know, I'm happy to help facilitate that. And I apologize to President. I don't want to hijack this motion with a discussion about this issue, but I do think it's a worthy discussion to continue going forward. And, you know, while it might not seem this way, I'm very frustrated about how this kind of developed. But, you know, it's, it's a potential removal without prejudice, and we can always bring it back.
Right. I mean, I think it's completely valid for us to question that when you are making a motion to remove something from the agenda because people have not been able to meet. So I think that the topic of why they haven't been able to meet is certainly viable and reasonable as we're making this motion. And I would, I would like also to find out why it's so difficult for a sitting committee to be unable to meet for the last seven to eight months. So I echo what Counselor Peak has said and what you said, Counselor Zera. So if we can get to the bottom of this, I don't want to take up this meeting to do that. But I think we've all kind of voiced our concerns now. And, and we'll just move forward with the motion unless anyone has any objections at this time. Okay, Barbara?
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
And Omar Gomez.
Aye.
And now that it's voted, Owen, I just wanted to remind you that the poll location does need a public hearing. So don't.
Yeah, so we're gonna, I need to set a property meeting. I did reach out to Eversource today. My thought is hopefully that second meeting in December. I'll, you know, let's just set it now. I'll set a public here. I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the second meeting in December, which.
December 16.
Thank you. And the request was to meet that same day, which I'm going to try to do, but I will talk to Eversource as well and see if there's flexibility there. Because trying to meet before a council meeting, I think with some of our schedules can be complicated. But I reached out to the wrong Eversource representative today. I will let you all know ASAP.
So we, so we need to vote on a public hearing? We do. So did you make a motion?
You make a motion and I second it.
Okay, sorry. All those, Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I just wanted to say really quickly, too, especially to Counselor Rist, who's chairman of the CPA, that I do not take lightly having received those, those funds for, not me personally, but those funds being allocated for this project. And certainly, something I'd be willing to do would be to offer my counselor stipend in return to the CPA to pay back that money. It's something you and I could talk offline, but I, I'm, I'm a little disappointed. I apologize that, about if that money went to waste.
Counselor Rist?
CPA, well, thank you, Counselor Zera, but that's ridiculous. No, you don't have to give your stipend. CPA has numerous projects that have, for some reason or other, not come to fruition or where money has not been used the way we'd like. I will point to the football field, which that was out of our hands and out of the school department's hands. But that was a rather large appropriation. And we did get a lot of use out of it, but that's an example. So the fact that we looked into this is worthy of CPA funds. And it's not dead. So let's not, let's not worry about it now. I am with you. We're going to have to find out why we can't put this in the park. So it's not a dead item. But thank you. You don't need to reimburse the CPA. That would be an awesome precedence, and I wouldn't like to go there.
All right. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Zera. Counselor Peak, rules in government relations.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't need any extensions this time. That's really cool. So we just voted on the Health Director. We don't have, yeah, so we met Monday, I already said that. We don't have another meeting set at this time. When we do have a meeting, I think the thing that I'd like to turn to next is the proposed rule requiring anti-bias training. That seems just manageable and timely. So I know that was Counselor Zera's proposal. So what I'd like to do is circle back with Counselor Zera and with my colleagues on the committee and just find a time that works for all of us. I did speak to Counselor Zera briefly earlier and was told that this was not a intensely time-sensitive issue in his mind. So I don't, I think we can probably wait till after Thanksgiving and all that. But sometime probably in December, I'd like to meet to discuss that. Tonight, I did want to say that we met to talk about the establishment of a ordinance review committee. And I will, I sent you a little write-up that I did. I sent the whole council and city clerk a little write-up about sort of the general parameters of what we agreed on for said committee. But I'll go over it here as well. So the idea would be that the committee would be comprised of seven members, all of whom are appointed by the city council president. Up to three of the members would be city councilors. The remaining members would be members of the community or sort of others with relevant expertise who applied. The committee would have one year to review the city ordinances and report back to the council with any proposed changes. But this is important. They wouldn't necessarily be doing the kind of work that we would be doing in, say, ordinance or public safety. Their job is to present a report saying, we looked at the ordinances, here's what we find, here's what we recommend. But in terms of the actual, like, nitty-gritty legislating, if there's any really complicated issues, they can just pass those back. They can easily say, we recommend you change this word, or we recommend you strike this, it's of no longer use. But if something's like really complicated, they can also just say, we found some problems with this, and we recommend you look at a way to amend it so that it deals with this issue. Does that make sense? Seeing no objections. Yeah, so it'll be up to the committee to decide how often to report to the council. They need not wait until the end of their task is, wait until their task is complete, if they identify items that should be amended or deleted. So they could report back at every meeting. They could report back all at once at the very end. It'll be up to them to decide how to do that. Where the committee's reports indicate a need for change, those will then be sent to ordinance or public safety, or maybe in some cases, finance, if it's like a pay plan thing, you know, it'll be sent to a relevant committee to sort of take their recommendation and process it and bring it back to the full council. So they can, it'll be then, you know, up to us to introduce those as new business. So the committee has the, the task of, you know, identifying any amendments or revisions that it finds desirable. In particular, in light of all of the insane and horrifying stuff that's happened this year, it is charged with the task of identifying any systemic or inherent bias or prejudice which may exist within our city ordinances. I don't know what they'll find. I think it's important for us to take a deep look at that. And then the final thing that we put is, should the city complete its review of the city ordinances within the one-year timeframe, the committee is encouraged to perform a similar review on the city's traffic rules and orders. We discussed adding the zoning as well, but particularly in light of the conversations that were had at Thursday's meeting about the housing production plan. It seems like that's an entire other production of how we're going to look at our zoning. we're going to look at our zoning that will likely require other resources and potentially some other expertise and other brilliant minds sort of focused on that world. So, it was for that that we decided that these two documents were probably more than enough for them to have a lot to chew on for a year. So, that's my basic presentation on this subject. Does anybody have any, any questions?
Council Rist?
I just want to say that although Tom is bringing up our recommendations, the strict recommendation is the size of the committee and the appointment of councilors and citizens, et cetera. The idea that maybe we won't do zoning or we won't do traffic rules and orders doesn't preclude them from somebody bringing forward, oh, look at this zoning here, it has systemic racism in it or something. I mean, if somebody brought that forward, that doesn't mean they won't look at it. Does that, is that okay, Tom? Is that interpretation all right? Because I believe we're not restricting them, we're just recommending them not to look at zoning right now, but somebody might find something if they do their homework. I, I don't think we're gonna restrict that, am I correct?
I mean, certainly, once the committee is formed, it'll be up to them to sort of chart their course, just like all of our council committees do. But I did feel like in order, sort of, because people are going to be applying to this and they're going to have, they're going to want a sense of, of sort of what their workload is. And especially because there's a limited timeframe in our charter for this to get done, it was important for them to have a sense of what we were asking for them to do. I wouldn't want somebody blowing through the ordinance really, really, really fast because they think they have to get to the zoning by the end of this.
Tom, did you have any, I don't, now that I'm looking at the calendar, I don't know if we talked about this. Did we talk about when we would look to get applications by an end date? Because I would think we would want to start this no later than January 1.
I'd want to start this no later than, I guess, I mean, not that we would be starting anything on January 1, but really December 31, because, yeah, or January 1. The important thing is, I want this to be started, yeah, by the end of the year, so that any counselor who serves on this, who may either choose to not seek reelection or not be reelected, that that won't be like, that they'll still have their counselor status through the course of this report. So, I guess we should probably post now, and I, that is one thing I, thanks for reminding me. I would ask everyone on the council, as well as anyone listening who's interested in this sort of thing, to really amplify the message that we're taking applications for this and to get those to President Coniff, because we want a big, healthy pool of volunteers, if we can get them. And we want that process set up by the end of December, so that their, you know, one year can start and end before the end of this council term.
Why don't we, why don't we say then, Tom, that the application cutoff date is December 9, and then at the December 16 meeting, I'll announce who they are?
That's like, like, three and a half weeks, that should be fine.
Yeah, that should be plenty of time. Okay.
Barbara has a comment.
Barbara?
Peg, if you, if you want to put together a little blurb about this and you get it to me, I can put it under, on the website under News and Updates.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Let's see, Council Zaret.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Zaret.
Just really quickly, I think this is a great idea. I mean, there's a variety of issues, just in my experience, brief experience with the ordinances, where there's little things in the language, I think, that could use, you know, at least some investigation. Do you, Council Peak, do you have examples of other municipalities that might have done this and kind of, some of the language that may or may not have been detected that was of concern and then sent for amendment?
I don't, although I did get an email from someone in the city of Northampton saying that they're doing the same thing. I think, once again, they're, you know, copying, so cool. But they got a little bit of a head start on it. But I, I don't have a sense, this was sort of just a thought I had, but I, I don't, no, not at this time.
All right. Tom, you want to make a motion to establish the ADHOP committee?
Yes. I move to establish an ordinance review committee pursuant to Section 8-6B of the Home Rule Charter of the City of East Hampton.
Second.
Motion is second to establish an ordinance review committee. Any further discussion? Council Rist?
Tom, do you want to amend the motion so that you indicate that we'll have seven members? Do you think that's appropriate? I think it is. Establish an ordinance review committee that has seven members.
I'll, I'll take another crack at it.
Okay.
I move to establish an ordinance, or do I need to, I need to rescind the previous motion?
First one.
Withdraw my motion.
You second, did anybody second it?
Erica did.
Okay. Rescind your second?
I rescind my second.
I move to establish an ordinance review committee pursuant to Section 8-6B of the Home Rule Charter of the City of East Hampton, comprised of seven members appointed by the City Council President, up to three of which being members of the City Council.
Erica.
Second.
I'm going to give it to Erica. Motion is second to establish an ordinance review committee. Any further discussion? Oh, Owen, you're killing me. Council Zaret?
Thank you, President Coniff. I would hope that you would, I would see more enthusiasm, but I get it. It's me. Just for the record, really quickly, I expressed concern about the nature of the committee in the sense that I was hoping it might be more of a subcommittee of, of ordinance based on the scope. But I, I think now that I understand better how it works and recommendations will ultimately come back to ordinance for review, that I, I don't have an issue. So, I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And thus concludes. Yeah, thus concludes.
Okay, thank you. Tom, do you have any updates on the Rand Choice Voting Committee for the City of East?
We're meeting tomorrow.
Okay. And JP, do you have any updates on the Senior Tax Workoff Committee?
Just to be brief, we are anticipating having a report in December. So, I would look, I'm not sure if it'll be December 2 or for the second meeting in December, but I'd like to be able to have that prepared for the City Council to review and perhaps then refer to the mayor for recommendation. So, it's exciting. And I think we're getting the parameters together. So, senior tax workoff, actually with, just briefly to dovetail with the Property Committee and the dog park, one of the positions that might be suitable would be someone to care for the dog park from, for a time, for a short time, several hours a week. And that could be a good position, I think, for a senior. So, just a thought. I remember when I went over to the dog park in Hoyoke to, as we were evaluating the dog park, there was someone there who was happy as a clam to be doing the work and taking care of public property. So, thank you.
That's a very good point. And I'll just, one more plug for the Senior Tax Workoff Committee, that, that one of the things we, we spoke to the department heads about was, think beyond roles that you have right now and think about things that you don't even know that you might need and, and think outside the box. So, that's a very good point, that it, it could be that we assign someone to a dog park, to be the cleaning of the dog park. Okay. We have done all the old business, all the new business. Council Rist, seconds from a clean getaway.
I, I just want to ask Barbara, I believe my interpretation of open meeting laws means that we don't have to re-advertise the ordinance for the mayor's position if we change it to a step increase. We're still.
Yeah.
Doing the same thing. So, I just wanted to make sure of that before, because we set the continuation for December 2, which would mean if we had to re-advertise it, that couldn't happen. But you don't think we do, right?
No, you're just continuing it.
But we're, we're changing some of the language, but it's not.
Right.
All right, thank you.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Barbara?
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Aye.
Owen?
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Yep.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Please have a safe holiday and keep your distances. Bye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good, uh.
Holiday. Happy Thanksgiving.